Thank you. And City Manager Molly, do we have any agenda amendments?
We have no amendments to the agenda tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Niesemeyer.
So, motion by Niesemeyer, second by Seldervold. I wasn't sure who said that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to recognitions and presentations, the first one is a proclamation of the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So this is an official proclamation of the city of Morehead, state of Minnesota, whereas domestic violence is a pervasive, life-threatening crime that affects people of all genders, races, ages, and socioeconomic backgrounds, significantly impacting individuals and families in every community, including Morehead, Minnesota. And whereas the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center of Fargo, Morehead, has been a critical lifeline for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, providing support, advocacy, safety planning, and essential services to survivors and their families for over 47 years. And whereas between October 1st, 2023, and September 30th, 2024, 2,586 out of 3,039 clients, or 85.1% served by the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, experienced domestic violence. And the center responded to this alarming need with immediate compassionate and comprehensive care to support victim survivors in their healing journey. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to honor the courage of victim survivors, amplify the voices of those affected, and raise awareness of the impact domestic violence has on our community with the goal of fostering a culture of safety, respect, and accountability. And whereas prevention efforts, education, and community involvement are essential in reducing the incidence of domestic violence, and we as a community must remain committed to promoting programs and policies that prioritize the safety and well-being of victims and survivors. And whereas the city of Morehead joins the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center in their efforts to provide prevention, education, advocacy, counseling, and outreach, ensuring that every victim survivor of domestic violence knows they are not alone and help is available. And whereas during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we encourage all residents of Morehead to stand together to support victim survivors, hold abusers accountable, and work towards creating a future free from violence and abuse. Now therefore, I, Shelley Carlson, Mayor of the city of Morehead, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Morehead, and urge all residents to actively participate in efforts to prevent domestic violence and support the ongoing work of the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center in our community. Thank you. And I know that there is a representative of rape and abuse in the audience tonight. So thank you for coming and thank you for the work that you and the staff and the volunteers of rape and abuse do in the community. Moving on, we have a presentation from the United Way of Cass Clay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for just giving me a few minutes to share more about United Way and how each of us can help create a better community for everyone. My name is Valerie Meese. I serve on the team at United Way. I think I'm close enough here. Can they hear me? Okay, I'm just making sure. Yep, and so I just wanted to kind of share more about United Way and how really every fall, we do a campaign where we ask for donations and support from our community. And I know the city of Fargo is a big supporter of United Way as well. So United Way is focused on cultivating solutions to end poverty. And here in the Cass and Clay community, one in nine people are experiencing poverty. And United Way works to understand local challenges by connecting experts and data and investing in the programs and innovative solutions that are best positioned to end the complex cycle of poverty. We know that poverty isn't just one thing. Across our community, families are struggling with things like housing, food insecurity, transportation, childcare, living wage employment, and all of those things happen at the same time. And so by looking at all of these barriers, we focus on creating meaningful, long-term change in three areas of preventing hunger and homelessness, preparing children to succeed, and strengthening families. Each year during the fall, we run a community-wide campaign where we highlight some stories of impact and really specific areas that United Way is working to create lasting change. This year, we are highlighting mental health services for families, children, and individuals in our communities. And whether you yourself have struggled with mental health or you know someone who has, it is a challenge that affects so many in our community. And getting help, even in the best of circumstances, can be difficult. But for families already experiencing so many of those barriers and experiencing poverty, getting help can often be impossible. And so United Way brings together those local experts and carefully examines the data to invest in those programs that are making sure that mental health services are available to our neighbors in need and making sure that they can get equitable access to those services, whether it's mental health counseling through the village, for example, or having a counselor at school. There's many different ways that United Way is partnering with various nonprofits across the community to make sure that those services are happening. As I mentioned, we really have those three areas that we focus on of preventing hunger and homelessness, preparing kids to succeed, and strengthening families. And there are 44 different partners across Cass and Clay communities, but many of them serving Morehead residents as well that are supported by United Way. And a couple of those would be the Jump Start Program at Morehead Area Public Schools. CAP LP has several programs supported by United Way, the Legal Services of Northwestern Minnesota, and then The Village as well. And since it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, I want to highlight their work as well as we support two different programs, therapeutic intervention and crisis intervention at the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, as well as the Red River Children's Advocacy Center that does a lot of that just recovery work. So many, many different programs that are impacted by United Way. So we just ask as a council, as well as city residents, that you consider supporting United Way this year. It doesn't take a lot to make a really big difference. Just a dollar a week or about $52 in a year is enough to provide two nights of housing for a family. So we are, last year, we were able to raise $6.1 million, and this year, we are hoping to raise 6.2 to help all of those programs in our community. And as we know, the challenges in our community are not going away. And so the more dollars we're able to raise, the more support we can give out to the programs in our community that are really making that lasting social change for our area. So thank you for your consideration. I know the city of Fargo is running their United Way campaign internally right now for the next couple of weeks. But so we encourage you to participate in that in any way that you're able to. But and all across the community, I know many workplaces are raising support for United Way, but we need every dollar that we possibly can. So thank you for your consideration and for your time today.
Thank you so much, Valerie, and thank you for all the work that is done by United Way. In addition to the city of Fargo, the city of Morehead is also doing internal fundraising with staff. And I believe each department is contributing. And maybe City Manager Molly, if you want to talk a little bit about that. And I would encourage all of our council members to do the same. But if you want to talk about that?
Happy to, Mayor. So we kicked off our campaign at city of Morehead on Monday. And Michelle is here, who's been so great to help us get the word out. And so certainly appreciate the collaborative spirit and the great work that the United Way does across our community. And so and then the team across Morehead that has been just such a great public sector supporter. I'll say there's so much that we do across public safety, fire, police, public works on the snow plowing, and then the folks that still give to make sure that, you know, we're catching folks before we, you know, they fall to the street. And that, you know, we are a community that nips issues in the bud, and this is one of the ways that we do that. So our local campaign in Morehead runs for two weeks, starting on Monday. And there's, you know, different activities and things happening. There's going to be an online auction and all kinds of stuff that will all be part of. So look forward to reporting back when that's complete.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And I would encourage just members of the community to contribute as well. You guys fill huge needs and gaps in our community, so. Right, moving on to the approval of the September 23rd, 2024 meeting minutes. Do you have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second, Nelson.
Who said, who made the motion? Oh, okay. Councilmember McDougal. Sounded like councilmember Nelson. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We do have one citizen that is in the audience to address the council. But I will call you up, Ms. Anderson, when we get to 11A, since you noted that on the request to speak form. So move, is there any other citizens in the audience who wish to address the council though at this time? Again, any other members of the audience wish to address the council? All right, seeing none, I will move on. Can we do that yet? We have two public hearings, but we're not able to do them at this time. But I believe that we could do 9E, since that public hearing has been open for a period of time. This would be to close a public hearing on the amendment of the Community Development Block Grant. I believe Lisa Bodie was going to address this issue or item.
Well, if she doesn't, I can.
Okay, so I will turn 9E over to you, City Manager Molly.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the first thing, so the public hearing was left open on this amendment to the Community Development Block Grant 2024 Action Plan. So there was a 30-day comment period that ran with it. There were no comments submitted. And I understand nobody's here to comment. So the first recommendation would be to close the hearing that was left open from our last meeting.
Okay, so with that, do I have a motion to close the public hearing of this agenda item?
So moved, Niesemeyer.
White, seconds.
So a motion and a second, Niesemeyer and White. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So then I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The second recommendation is to approve the amendment to the 2024 Action Plan along with the grant year time change in timing of the expenditures.
So 9F and G can be taken together. So I would be looking for a motion to approve that agenda item.
Don't move.
Deb White. Second, Niesemeyer.
A motion by White and a second by Niesemeyer. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, it is 5:45, so we can go back to 9A. And this would be to open the public hearing regarding the request of John Norberg on behalf of Norcaster LLC for property tax exemption for a property located at 2605 A Street South. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing portion of this agenda item?
So moved, Nelson.
Second, Niesemeyer.
A motion by Nelson, second by Niesemeyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So the public hearing is open. I will turn this over to Mr. Derek Lapointe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We do have project representatives, one online, Mr. John Norberg, and one in the audience here, Mr. Kelly Lancaster, for any detailed project questions you may have.
Derek, just a minute. Chris Ratty, I know that you can hear me. He's a guy behind the curtains. Our computers are not, we can't see anything on them. So if you're able to pull that information up, that'd be great. Right, thank you, Derek.
Yep, no worries. So the public hearing here is for a property tax incentive for our commercial industrial property tax incentive program. This is for Norcaster LLC doing business as courtside to construct a new full-service restaurant and event space located at 2605 A Street South, formerly known as the Family Fair Grocery Store. The project has two phases, one being courts and pints, which is the pickleball aspect of this with multiple pickleball courts within the facility. What we are looking at per state statute is the restaurant and the event space. We are not allowed by state statute to incentivize specifically racket sports. So that is a state code that we're not able to approve. But we are looking at specifically the restaurant and the event space. So Mr. Norberg and Mr. Lancaster are looking at repurposing and remodeling the formerly Family Fair Grocery Store, which has been vacant since 2019. The plan is to construct a new full-service restaurant and event space, which consists of community and party rooms, again, co-located with the pickleball and bake toss courts, all managed by the same entity. So I can let Mr. Norberg and Mr. Lancaster speak to the business itself. The business itself will create 12 full-time new employees as well as 18 part-time employees. In looking specifically again at the event space and the restaurant space, our city assessor has estimated that a new property tax valuation of about $1.5 million will be added to the space itself. That equates to a five-year exemption of that new value created in this space. So excited to see this space transform. We know it's been sitting for a number of years. Excited to see some life that's going to be there and the connection that this is going to make to the community. I know they've been receiving wonderful kind of high praise for having this in Morehead and having this within the regional community. So excited and thank you, Mr. Norberg and Mr. Lancaster, and be happy to answer any questions. And I know they'd be happy to share a few more details as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lapointe. Mr. Norberg, just want to give you the opportunity to make a statement or maybe your representative. I don't know which one of you would like to speak.
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, if you guys can hear me.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. So excited about this project, passion for pickleball, and was looking for a location for this and the site, those locations ideally suited for the project. It's two separate companies, one will be the courts portion and one will be the entertainment venue with the bar and a self-service tap wall. Very, just have gotten a ton of encouragement and a lot of excitement about the project in general. And I think it'd be a nice addition to Morehead, a nice place for people to go. Part of this was to have events where people can come together and have a, you know, anything from a birthday party to a big corporate event and everything in between. And so I think it would be a nice, nice addition to options for to be really for Morehead.
Thank you.
Exactly what he said.
Okay, all right. All right, so since this is a public hearing portion of this agenda item, this is an opportunity for anybody in the public to make a statement in regards to this agenda item. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment at this point in time? All right, seeing none, then I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this item.
So moved, Nelson. Second, Hendrickson.
Have a motion by Nelson and a second by Hendrickson. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. So the public hearing portion is closed. So any questions or comments from council members? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to first thank you for bringing this project forward. I'm so excited about it. As one of the two Ward Three representatives, you know, this is, this is one of the things that the folks in that area have talked about for a long time, that, you know, before we had the old holiday, or the old Days Insight, and then we had this. And we've seen such growth in other parts of, you know, apartment buildings, more people moving in there, and to have this added to it and something finally in that spot is absolutely fantastic. And I think, you know, we know that our winters are long, and having some nice indoor places to go, and I think the idea of having, you know, is with an event space, a place where you could grab a bite, grab a drink, have fun, is a wonderful idea. I will say, I've had some people ask if you would consider any sort of a playground space. I'll just leave it at that, but there's been requests that they wanted to know if you'd have some, some, a few little things for, for the kiddos too, so besides pickleball. But I'm super excited about this project and can't wait to see it open. Thank you for, thank you for bringing this to Morehead.
Absolutely, thank you.
For sure.
Any other comments or questions by council members? Councilmember Nisa Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too just want to pile on with my excitement for this project. I frequently hear from families who have lots of kids or who have very active adults and elders combined with some teens, and there are not a lot of things to do, and they're looking for options. And so I love the opportunity for people to walk, bike, get to this space, and do really active things, eat good food, and engage with a variety of people who come to Morehead to do business on purpose. And so I just want to thank you for it and say that families are really wanting to know when it's going to open. So the minute it came out, they just wanted to know when they can walk through the doors. So I wanted to thank you and appreciate your creativity in this project.
Thank you.
Other council members? All right, seeing none. I would just echo that on a monthly basis, I get questions and inquiries regarding what is going to be done with the Family Fair building, what is going to be done. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to provide an answer other than it's privately owned and somebody is going to have to come and be creative and make good use of this space. So thank you for being able to give me that answer to provide to the community. I've heard nothing but positive comments about the vision that you have for that space in addition to the fact that the craze currently happening in Fargo, Morehead, and across the country about pickleball, we're going to have a number of people that are going to come over from across the river because I've only played it once, I didn't quite understand the rules, but I am willing to give it a second try. So I'll be the first one to sign up when you guys open the door. Thank you very much for coming to Morehead. We're excited to have you and look forward to the rip and cutting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I should say we should first maybe pass a resolution and then we'll congratulate you. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the property tax exemption for Norcaster LLC.
So moved, Nisa Meyer.
White seconds.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So now I will tell you congratulations, and we'll be there for the rip and cutting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to 9C, this is also another public hearing to consider adoption of a special assessment for public improvements for various construction projects. And this would be Mr. Tom Trobridge, but do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Seldervold.
Second, McDougal.
So I have a motion by Seldervold, second by McDougal. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So the public hearing portion of this agenda item is open. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Trobridge.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. So this is a, a hearing that we hold pretty much every year. We have various capital improvement projects that are financed in part through special assessments. What happens is we bid the projects and we plan to finance them partially with assessments. We issue bonds to pay the cost of it, and then at the end of the year, we'll hold the assessment hearing. These projects, some of them are fully complete, others are not fully complete yet, but they're very close, and we fully expect that they will be completed within the next couple of weeks, and the weather looks good, so there's no concerns on our end for that. These projects, again, they were our, generally they're our standard capital improvement program projects, so street rehabs, mill and overlay, reconstruct. And we partner with Morehead Public Service, they do some water main replacement at the same time. We also have a lot of cooperation with Excel Energy, and they've replaced a lot of gas mains on some of these projects as well. So, but generally the projects went well, and we are looking to have these assessments recorded. The only update I have to what's in the council communication is we did receive one more call this afternoon, and I think the main point of that call was, that was a project that right in that person's neighborhood was not fully done yet, and they were kind of upset about that and concerned about that. But again, the project will be completed prior to November 15th, and that's when the assessment hearing officially, or the assessment would get recorded and submitted to the county, and then payments would start next year. So do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Trobridge. Since this is a public hearing portion of this agenda item, are there any members of the public who have a statement to say at this time? Again, any members of the public who wish to speak on this agenda item? Ma'am, you can come up if you'd like to speak to this agenda item. Yep, you can certainly come up. Thank you. And you'll be able to have three minutes to speak. When the green light is on, that means your three minutes are still going. When the red light turns on, it means your three minutes are done, and you'll need to state your name, and if you are a resident of Morehead, and then you can speak to the adoption of special assessments for public improvements for various construction projects.
And I'm Patty Dowling, and I'm probably the lady he was referring to that called.
Do you want to bring the microphone down a little bit too? There you go, thank you.
And I'm the one that he probably was referring to because I've called several times during the course of summer. So what if this isn't completed by the November 15th? Because the last time I checked, they guaranteed me it'd be done by October 15th. So here we are today, and it's not done, so.
Okay.
So if it's, so if it's not done, are we getting special assessed on something that's not complete?
Okay, thank you. And maybe, Mr. Trobridge, you could address that question, please.
If the assessment gets adopted, then the assessment will be recorded, it'll be certified to the county. With, again, with the amount of work that remains on the project, we're confident it'll get completed. If for some reason it started raining tomorrow and didn't stop raining and they weren't able until it snows, they'll finish it next year. At this point, you know, we've completed most of the project, and I think her project in particular was one that involved almost 30 blocks of work. It had, it was Sixth Avenue North, 14th Street North, 16th Street North, and I think there was one other street in there involved as well. At least half of those blocks had Excel Energy doing work, and Morehead Public Service also, I think, had work on at least half of those blocks. So it was a very large project and a lot to get done, but yes, we're confident it'll get finished.
Thank you. There are the other members of the public who wish to speak on this agenda item? All right, you guys can come up. And again, you'll need to state your name if you are a resident of Morehead, and then you'll have three minutes on this timer here.
All right, green light, right?
Yep, oh, it's right here.
Oh, okay. My name is Connor Ewing. This is my wife, Dusty Ewing. We live on Sixth Avenue North, 1313. We had a question based on our special assessments at, we had talked to Eric, last name?
Norsted.
Norsted, and he was the project manager, I believe. We talked to him about having our driveway widened. We did receive emails or a quote to have this process done. We never signed anything nor sent anything back to have this completed. The work was done. They asked for us to sign some paperwork to agree on the special assessment of, I believe it was $1,500, $1,607.03. We are wondering if we are held liable to this even though we did not agree or sign to any of these objections, so.
Thank you for that. And I'm not sure if this is one that Mr. Trobridge would be able to respond to or Mr. Shockley, or if this is something that you would need to visit with outside of the council meeting?
If there, if there's more for us to oblige, it was just the aspect of, if we are due to pay for this, there are aspects that we need to have changed for the project that was done. It was not, if, if we were to pay for this, it is not done to our expectations as homeowners, and nor would we be proud of the project that has been done if we were to sell this to anybody else. So we just want to express our feelings on that aspect. The other question was answered as another lady had asked on, are we going to pay for this coming November 15th? And being that the projects are not done, but I think he answered it, and hopefully they finish it because there's still quite a bit to be completed, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Trobridge or Mr. Shockley, I'm not sure which one of you would be able to address that. Mr. Shockley, I think you unmuted yourself, so please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. From my, my perspective, we would need to look at the underlying documents and see what was signed before we can make a decision.
Okay, so we'll have you speak with Mr. Trobridge afterwards so that you guys can know what would be the next step in getting the paperwork to, you know, to be reviewed by our city attorney, and we'll go from there. Right, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this agenda item at this time? All right, seeing none. I would be looking for a motion to approve the public hearing portion of this agenda item.
So moved, Deb White.
Second, Nisa Meyer.
You have a motion and a second. Motion to approve, or what did I say, approve? I meant to close. I apologize. That's why none of you responded. To close the public hearing portion of this agenda item, and White with the motion for that, and Nisa Meyer with the second. Any discussion in regards to closing the public hearing portion of this agenda item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, the public hearing portion of this agenda item is closed. Any comments or questions from council in regards to this, this public hearing? Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. When you say, you know, we're confident that'll be, the project will be closed by November 15th, can you give me a percentage of what's been completed?
I, I really can't. I didn't have a chance to talk specifically to that project manager, but I, I know the work, most of the work is done, and I, the part I think that was remaining was the mill and overlay section, which usually isn't that difficult to get finished up.
How long does that take, usually? Depends?
It depends how large of an area was to be done, but usually with the mill and overlay, they mill, and then they come in and they overlay it, and you're talking about a few days.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments by council members? Right, seeing none, I would be looking for a motion to approve the resolution on 9D.
So moved, Seldervold.
Second, Nelson.
There's a motion by Seldervold, second by Nelson. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. And for the individuals who did speak, Mr. Trobridge will be able to speak with you outside of the council chambers to provide you with some more information and direction. Great, so thank you. Moving on to 11A, it would be under the Community Development Department, and I know that we do have one individual who wanted to speak to, specific to this agenda item, so I will have her come up at this point. Ms. Anderson, if you want to come up to the podium, and if you can state your full name, and if you are a resident of Morehead, and then you'll be given three minutes to speak. When the buttons here turn red, then you will need to end your, your time at the podium. You may go ahead.
My name is Sue Anderson. Thank you, committee. I'm a long-term Morehead resident, former Spud, former Dragon, and I'm even, still currently work now for MSUM. My childhood home is currently at 3744 28th Street South, and so right near the property in question, between the two churches, Calvary Baptist and Good Shepherd. So if I walked out of my driveway, I would walk right into new single-family homes being built. Our home's a 1910 Victorian home. To the right of us is Gus Johansson's late 1800s Victorian home. To the left of me is Beth Ann, who couldn't be here tonight, she spoke last time, and the Good Shepherd Church. And, and other than the church, it's pretty much all residential neighborhoods, and we'd like to keep it that way, including the members east of the church. Oddly enough, my sister and I both co-own our old family home that we grew up in. She lives in Detroit Lakes, but she was the one who got the map and all the information on this proposed project. I'm the Morehead resident, and I didn't get it. But the more, I bring this up because the more neighbors are finding out about the proposed apartment, little strip mall or 15-minute city, whatever you want to call it, the more they're just as baffled, just as concerned, and kind of against it as I am. But in all fairness to you, unless somebody gets up and talks, how are you ever supposed to know that there are residents like myself not for this? I have more years, I'm 60 now, many Morehead High reunions be under my belt, and it may not be a fair question to ask, but if I were to go around to every one of you and say, hey, you know, next to your dream home and the home you acquired and worked for all your life, would you want a strip mall and apartment and a little nail salon and a mini mall and 15-minute city next to you? And I don't know what you'd answer to that would be, but it, it might very well be, yeah, If you come from Fargo and you take the first exit into Morehead, the first thing you see are two brand-new apartments, and right by those two apartments are existing businesses that were already there, like Walgreens, Dairy Queen, Holiday Gas Station Subway, strip mall, car wash, and I could go on. So the apartments really fit that area, and they came after the businesses were already there. We don't feel it fits our neighborhood to the property right west of the Good Shepherd Church, and we would like to just see more of the homes that are currently being built, more existing homes. We also didn't feel, our question was answered last time when we asked how many, just how many apartments in Morehead already filled, and got kind of an evasive reply, and I want to know, is that Griffin Court not allowing you? Is it Sam Scaff, Scaff Apartments? Is it Goldmark? Is it Goldmark not letting us know? Because somebody would know. How filled are they? Is there such a demand that it has to go in that property? You know, just average citizen concerns. So we as neighbors and residents just respectfully ask you reconsider. We'll vote no. We'll do all we can to hopefully dissuade the apartment and the complex and the mini mall and little 15-minute city from going there. But I just want to have, just know that I've done my part. One person can represent 10 people, so thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will turn this over to Ms. Robin Houston, Houston, in regards to the second reading of ordinance rezoning 2107 40th Avenue South.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. At your last meeting, you approved a first reading of this rezoning ordinance to rezone this vacant parcel from TZ Transitional to mixed-use neighborhood, excuse me, mixed-use to neighborhood mixed-use. Normally, these second readings are on the consent agenda, but due to the one no vote at the last meeting, procedurally, they are removed. The public hearing portion of this project has been completed, but both the developer and I are here to answer your questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is really tough. And for me, it kind of hits home because I've been in a similar situation in my own neighborhood. It's been a number of years, but I've seen both ends of the spectrum. A developer who wasn't from here, steamrolled the neighbors and did some real damage, you know? And it was, it was really tough for a while, seeing some of the things that some of my neighbors had to go through. And then I've seen great developers that worked with the neighbors and created projects that were great for the developer, great for Morehead, and great for the adjacent neighborhood. And, and I really have valued that we have used that as more of a model of how to create those opportunities to engage ahead of time so that, not that everybody gets exactly what they want, but that we can alleviate some of those anxieties and maybe tweak things a little bit so that we can get good projects that really do, you know, fit as many needs and at least make people feel like this is something where my voice was heard and I'm proud of what we ended up with in the end. And I don't feel like we're there yet. And this is, it is really tough because our developer, Mr. Berg, I really appreciate the investment that they've made in Morehead, and it's been tremendous, you know? And I, it's part of the growth that we're seeing in our community. And I also appreciate the investment that individual homeowners have made in their houses. And the dollar signs are not nearly as much, but for those people, that investment in their home is often their biggest investment. And so I remember what that felt like when people said, well, you know, look at all of this, this is a big project for Morehead, but for me, in my little house, you know, that meant a lot of like, if this was going to hurt my, my, again, much smaller investment, but it was still really valuable to me and to my neighbors. And so I do still have some questions, and, and it bothers me that I've had people stop me while I'm at the high school for an event, that we're getting letters, that there's clearly some concern, and I don't, I don't feel comfortable moving forward yet, and I would rather us take some time. I've mentioned this before, that it concerns me that for notification, I think that even when we are only required to send it out notifications to a certain area, it doesn't mean that we're prohibited from reaching out to a wider area. Now, as the word gets out, we're hearing people in that wider area really do have concerns. I have concerns, some concerns about some of the things like the traffic issues that we keep hearing about. And I wonder if an all-residential, even if it's a higher density, might be better in terms of traffic than a mixed-use, you know? Is there that conversation that could be had that, you know, if you don't have as many people coming out, coming in and out for, say, a business, if that might be less of an issue than if you had a, a higher-density residential area? I do also know that there has been some shifts in our community in terms of how we view mixed-use, that I'm a big proponent of mixed-use. I think that there's a lot of benefits to it, but we've seen things like, there's, in Fargo, a place that was mixed-use north of NDSU, that they've now taken those lower-level commercial spots and they're converting them back into residential because it just didn't work in that area, that that model doesn't always work everywhere. And I would hate to see, you know, us go in that direction and then say, oh, nope, that's, we don't, you know, businesses, we've just got empty storefronts. Now what are we going to do? And so I would like to have more discussion of that. And so my, my, obviously, I'm only one vote. My inclination would be to table it, to, I think, originally, we talked about community conversations when we had the, maybe things a little further along. My inclination now would be to have those conversations now and get neighbors together with the developer, together with the city, to talk about it, even in terms of zoning and what would work best. I, obviously, I'm only one vote, but my preference would be to either table it or I will vote no.
Mayor Carlson, just let me address a couple of things. The three residents that spoke against this project are not Morehead residents, they are Morehead Township residents, that's one thing. The notice that she said she didn't get, our notices go to the property tax address, so if her sister gets the property tax statements, that's why it went to Detroit Lakes. Lastly, the applicant is afforded statutory protections on how long we can take, to take action on these items, and he graciously afforded us an extension of the 60-day deadline to today. So today is the last day to take action, otherwise it's automatically approved. He did give us an extension because of the holiday that we had this week. So just, that's something, thing, the action, the 60-day action deadline is today, so you have to take, you cannot table it.
Any other questions? Councilmember Saldivol.
My concern is, we have these two properties, and I'm just going to put a value of $400,000 on these two pieces, on each of these properties. Well, if their backyard is going to have a bunch of apartments in it, I think they're going to lose value, they're not going to be $400,000 pieces of property anymore. And so, I mean, your home is a pretty big investment. And, you know, when I got bought out by the city, I, one of the reasons why I got bought out, I said, I'll take the buyout, is because I didn't know what my, what my value of my house is going to be after, if I would have stayed there. And so I'm concerned about these people having property and then investing a lot of money in it and then not getting a return on it eventually. So I, I know that they were, according to one, they were offered a buyout and it got taken away. I don't, I don't know the specifics on that, but that is my concern, is that these people are going to, they're going to lose value in their property depending on what's built around them. And it's, right now, it's, it's a concept, we don't know what it's going to be like, and it's not going to come before us. It's just going to go through departments, so that's my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Berg, for being here tonight to hopefully answer some of the questions that have been raised in regards to this area.
Thank you for, for having us. You know, I'm Justin Berg, I've lived in this area my whole life. I've been doing real estate for 19 years. I know I look like I'm 19, I'm 44. Probably halfway through the life of a developer, right? You know, this is our third subdivision, and we've been working on this master plan for over four years, based on documents made with the comprehensive plan, future land-use maps, growth plan, market data, city data. We also surveyed the neighborhood, and we can provide all of that information, because the first land we bought was 10 acres from Gus Johansson across the street from the resident today. That's, that was future land-use mapped as high-density. We listened to their comments, and we put the mixed-use lots adjacent to the arterial road instead of across from them. And now with the market changing, we're actually shifting any potential high-density across the street to where it has more discretion from all this residential existing development for the sake of trying to master-plan this to, to meet all of your community needs with quality players. We don't build anything. And honestly, residence or development, when you don't build anything, doesn't make you money. This is a community service, and we do our best to take all that information, meet with the public, and then you get the ball rolling with professionals. We have Lowery Engineering, civil engineer, Matt Lowery, entitlements consultant, IPA Sustainability and Development Coordinator. We've had three different planning architects master-plan this area. I have a stack of this that I'd be happy to sit down with any of you and go over, but the reality is, we planned this to bid this out in November, based on all the city documentation, staying ahead of the curve. I visited with Sue Kern for probably six hours on this. There's no surprises. We've adjusted our plans to have a 2.5 and 1.82 acre lot next to those homes, more in a neighborhood office. We'd love to get an Aldi's. All this will take time. There will need to be some density. It's in your future land-use plan, high-density, we don't have near the level of what's in your plan, as well as some commercial uses. If we get anything to work commercially on the fringes, will be a blessing, and if we do it, it will be incremental and professional. We don't do things at a half-level. We do historic renovations that win awards. We're developing New Haven and Riley's Acres, that can actually afford a large lot development. We've heard that, that's not going to work here. We're developing for the community with, there's this, yeah, that's, that's where we're at. I do appreciate their concerns. We have visited with them, and we have a duty to look at the whole as a master planner of a development, and we align with all of your city principles. We put in resiliency and native grass implementation that the developer is paying for and will turn over to an association. We have sustainable material implementation in our signage, as well as in building. We platted missing middle lots in this development. I mean, this, I live and breathe this development, one other development, we're not trying to take over the world, so that's, that's where we're at. And we're losing money on this development right now, plating lots. We're fortunate in time that with construction up 35%, this will benefit the people that are going to build homes there over the next four years, but this isn't a profitable venture currently. But we put a lot of time in this to make sure we can do our best for the city, satisfy an investor, and make progress where we're building this out slowly. We have planned this slow. So to table it now, it just, that would be disappointing, but thank you.
Mr. Berg, any questions or comments from other councilmembers? Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Matt Carlson. Is there, what I, my primary concern right now is, well, 40th, for sure, there's a lot of traffic, and I'm worried about the traffic on that street, I'm worried about the density. Like, I haven't seen plans, and I mean, it's like a fear of the unknown, I'm just kind of wondering what's, what's planned for it. And I agree with Councilmember White and Saldivol. You know, there's a lot of the unknown here, so if somebody could explain that, you know? But I'm just not sure what, what's going to go there.
Go ahead. Do you want to just state your name again for the record?
Yep, yep. So good evening, my name is John Lowery, I'm with Lowery Engineering, and our office has worked with the city engineering staff to develop a preliminary infrastructure plan, look at traffic counts, and also look at the plating of the property. So there is a proposed plat that, that will be coming or is available, but the, the traffic count, we were informed, I believe it came up last month, the 40th Avenue has sufficient infrastructure today for the capacities that are there. I think, I believe the statement was one-third of the total traffic volume that it can take. So, and beyond that, you know, Morehead has a really good professional staff that, that this isn't the first rodeo that they've been down. They've seen sections build out, you know, Fargo, the area has seen how Fargo-Morehead builds out and how, what, what infrastructure is needed for section line roads. And, you know, quite honestly, they got ahead of the curve with 40th Avenue when they put that in and what the demands are going to be. So I know it's easy, you know, and good questions, we want to have everything answered ahead of time, but I'd go back to what Justin said, you know, the history of this, this was looked at when Prairie Parkway First Edition came through, and some of the density that was zoned there was agreed to be pushed to the south based on some of the feedback from neighbors. He has attempted, over years, to work with the two individuals that are on the south side of 40th, and I respect everybody's right to their own personal property, right? I live out in the country for a reason myself, in rural Clay County. But, you know, when you live on the edge of town, City of Morehead is, growth is part of what cities do. So to not expect that development is coming and annexation is coming is somewhat unreasonable. So the city's built out infrastructure to support this development, they've developed a long-term growth plan that supports this development, and we, through working with the city, we'd ask for your support to, to move forward with what you've asked for, so.
Thank you. Mr. Berg, I know that you had mentioned something about platted for the missing middle, and I know that that is one topic of conversation that has come up several times at council meetings, that we're really looking for that opportunity for people in the missing middle to be able to look for some type of home ownership. And I know in the next 10 years, the City of Morehead needs to have 37, I believe it's 3,700 units available for individuals. Can you talk a little bit more about that missing middle that you mentioned?
Yes, in our Prairie Parkway First Edition, we have a 30,000-square-foot lot that has trees on it, that's really designed to be like a slab-on grade, four to six unit. So that's what we're finding a partner for, or we'll end up building that stuff out with our investment and time. We also made our mixed-use lots smaller to fit more of like a townhome project adjacent to the single-family housing north of 40th Avenue. So that's something we're working on the design of to, yeah, try to fill those needs between just a single-family home or an apartment. One additional thing that we're doing, you know, we've had opportunity to sell all these lots to one or two production builders at a discount, make this easy. Morehead's been doing it for years, you can look up and down, you know, just being real, living past, you know, along 40th. So we incrementally sell these lots to three different production builders, space them out, wrestle with them on design controls, get them to do additional floor plans. This isn't the way to make money in real estate, it's a way to build a neighborhood with the cards we've got in Morehead, so we're doing that. So, I mean, we're doing everything we can to try to build a neighborhood here that's balanced, that can sustain and fill the housing needs. And I can show you everything that we do, I'm happy to meet any of you and discuss what it takes to build out a neighborhood in Morehead with a master plan in a time of high inflation and still do it with some level of quality and not just turn and burn and keep moving, because that's not our style. I mean, we do three-year historic renovations, we're building an industrial hemp supply chain, five years, no revenue, well, except for last week. So that's the amount of tenacity we have to do things for progress for our community, so.
Thank you. Ms. Houston, can you refresh our memory on what are the different steps that need to get taken and the different, or how many different approvals need to occur before something actually can be given to a developer to move ahead with a project? Because this is a rezoning issue. Rezoning something doesn't necessarily always mean we have a developer, we happen to have a developer in this situation, but can you talk about the process a little bit?
Sure. So as Mr. Berg mentioned, we've been working on this master plan community for several years, and this involves all city departments, so it's just not me giving my opinion as the planner. We've reviewed it with traffic, we've reviewed it with all of the utilities, we've reviewed it with fire. So those are basically the first steps in doing, we have multiple pre-development meetings with the developer to talk about any issues that may come up, somebody has a question. We address all that well before they get to the planning commission stage. And then once they're ready to get to the planning commission stage, for planning commission stage, for example, this project required a comprehensive plan amendment, which you approved at the last meeting, a rezone, which requires two readings, and then a preliminary and a final plat. Typically, smaller plats will take the preliminary and the final at the same meeting. Larger plats will split them out into two different planning commissions. So this project was heard at the September Planning Commission meeting, and that's where the public hearing occurred. And then it goes to, you know, usually goes to the council right away at the next council meeting. We had a legal holiday last month and then the holiday yesterday. So that's why it threw off our schedule with the 60-day deadline. So once they get through those processes, there's still discussion between the city and the developer, because we have to form a developers' agreement, which you also approved a resolution for at the last meeting. So that is where we put in, you know, sidewalk requirements, boulevard tree requirements, how the utilities will be put in. Sometimes we'll have like extra things. For Prairie Parkway 1, we did some paths between houses or between the neighborhood to get pedestrians through the neighborhood as opposed to, you know, walking all the way around. So that's something special that we added to the developers' agreement. So then, once the developers' agreement gets finalized, the plat gets formalized, the plat gets recorded first, developer agreement gets filed at the recorder. And then the developer is ready to work on like individual site plans. And those, we start all over with the pre-development process. We go through, because we don't, you know, a plat is just a lot layout until they have an actual use for one of those lots, whether it's a commercial mixed-use building, or an apartment building, or a townhouse structure. We don't know until they come to us. And then, engineering and fire and all the other city departments will review that again in a pre-development review. And then the developer will get comments. They'll make corrections. We'll go back. It goes, you know, we go back and forth for a bit. Once they have sign-off from all the city departments, that is when they can apply for a building permit. And at the last meeting, we mentioned, talked about having like an open house. Once we got some type of application or concept of what they're proposing, that would be an appropriate time to have a neighborhood open house, maybe like at that church right on the corner. And then we could invite the neighbors to say, hey, what do you think about this project? You know, what are your comments? So that's just, that's an example for like this project, for that process.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Neesmire.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a follow-up question about, you had mentioned missing middle. I know some people had said that they do not wish to have corporations or businesses or anything in that space. And I'm, well, oh, I'm going to switch gears. I have two questions. Ms. Houston, at the last council meeting, you had said that there would be, I know John had referenced traffic and traffic flow, but that there would be no driveways onto 40th from this new development, that there would be alternative access. I had received some questions, and I'm assuming other council members have as well. Can you confirm, I know that that isn't part of the plan that they'll go through and check off with those departments based on the plan you just said, but can you confirm that the goal is not having any additional like residential, whether it's large or small, entry onto 40th?
The plat shows two access points onto 40th, but those are for, one's for a public street, one's for a private driveway. So there's not any individual new driveways that could possibly back out to 40th, because we would not allow that, because the street's too busy. There's also an access point on 28th Street. So this 30 acres has three points of entry, but no private driveways. So say they wanted to subdivide some of those larger lots, they have the opportunity to do all types of housing in this district. I might have misspoke. It's not just apartments that they can do. It's not just townhomes. They can do singles, twins, tries. But they would not have, even if it was singles, they would not have driveways that go out to 28th or 40th Avenue.
And that was my follow-up. So I wanted to get in your question first, and my follow-up was from Mr. Berg, because John had said that some additional development based on feedback had been pushed further south, which that's not what we're talking about rezoning. That's yet to come in the future. But I'm curious if there's any more ideas or things that people can talk about in this rezoned sort of space. You mentioned the one four-to-six unit in a currently trade-off space. But what that could be, just because people are really concerned about what will be there. Will it look, you know, shiny and new and metal, or will it fit in with, Councilmember Salgevold mentioned Victorian homes. I'm not familiar with sort of what homes are out there. I can't imagine a mixed-use Victorian building, but maybe they exist. I don't know. But just to give us just a few more ideas, because residents are concerned, but like what Councilmember Hendrickson said, it's just the idea of unknowing or not knowing. You don't know what you don't know. And this isn't your plan, right? You have 800 steps yet to go through, which Ms. Houston reviewed. But anything that can sort of make people sort of buy-in to this sort of idea, this visioning of building a community and how they might find their space in some of that 30 acres.
Well, you know, in our first edition, when you look at the existing lots adjacent to existing neighbors, those are extra-deep lots for the sake of, you know, trying to get this to blend in with the existing community, you know, make everything flow. Our 30,000 square foot lot that we're holding until we can find a partner to build out for slab-on-grade Ramblers is very intentional, because it's next to other residential homes that are larger lot, that are likely going to be a $400, $450,000 house. Then we have two blocks that are denser, that are more of your production builders, and we wrestle to fill those in. So we get six floor plans instead of one. That's a Herculean effort with no extra money. But that's how we've set up this first phase of it. And then we have our two mixed-use lots that we're working hard to find a townhome partner and to do something for a neighborhood commercial, because that's what the survey said when we surveyed the neighbors. They wanted that. It's going to be hard to pull off. We'll probably have to do it as the owners, you know, my development partner and I. Nobody else wants to build out right now. You know, it's just economically not quite feasible, but we're holding that for that intention at this point. Initially, when we moved more of that high-density potential south of 40th, that was based on the feedback from the neighborhood where we purchased land that had a future high-density zoning on Morehead's map. So...
Mr. Berg, can I ask really quickly, if you remember, how many people did you survey or how many surveys did you send out, and about how many did you get back?
My admin would have that answer. But we can get all of that information to you. It was the surrounding neighborhood of Morehead residents. There was maybe 10 or 12 that came back. They wanted something neighborhood for shopping, for coffee. That would be great. Nobody wanted apartments. Go figure, right? You know, it's been a predominantly residential neighborhood. We're also by 100-acre park on an Archeo Road with all sorts of people smarter than me that have set out that there should be some high-density along there. That's how a community sustains, right? There's a difference in residents, tax-based needs. I think we all know the sake of inflation. I'm sorry, there's going to be way more apartments built than houses in the next five, six years with 6%, 5% interest, 7%. It's just reality. And I don't love it. We're trying to build a supply chain out of hemp fiber to build a regional economy, and so we can sustain. And we still have to be real when we're putting in these infrastructure improvements and be a steward to where the markets are at today, you know.
Thank you. Any additional questions from council members? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple, going back to some of the traffic issues, because this is an area where we've worked on putting, you know, we want this to be a more bikeable, walkable community, and we're putting in trails. And I know part of the concern that I've been hearing about is that we have, that traffic on 40th is very fast. And I know somebody mentioned just two pretty serious accidents in the last year. And so, thinking about for the families that are living there or that will live there, you know, what are we doing to make sure that as things grow, that that doesn't become an even worse issue? Because again, it sounds like, one of the things that I've heard from people is that they really felt like when a previous project, when the church was built, that nothing was done ahead of time to ensure that we adjusted to prepare for that change in the traffic volume. And so it was catching up afterwards. And I'd rather see us deal with that on the front end. And so this is less a question for you, but this is the kind of thing of looking at, how do we work together and what are we doing to compromise on some things to say, okay, so if we are going to build, but maybe we're going to do this to address some traffic issues, to change the speed limit, to change, do some traffic calming on that? Because I've heard this multiple times, that people are already concerned, and then they're worried about this really exacerbating it. And that goes back to my other question was, have we thought about how all residential versus mixed-use differs in terms of traffic volume? And again, those types of conversations that might help to alleviate some people's concerns. So I have those two questions. And also, just, this goes back to, Robin, maybe you can help us out with, I'm looking for some guardrails here. And I heard you, when you talk about the timeline, I understand, again, this is a zoning issue right now, but it doesn't sound like this will come back to council at any point. Am I wrong on that? Is there a possibility that it could, that we could really make sure, because I'm not comfortable giving a final yes without us having some ability to respond to constituents about the concerns that have been raised. And I know we're saying we're going to have discussions later on, but I don't feel comfortable with that of just signing off on something without knowing that we'll have an opportunity to really look at this more closely later on and see if we've all, as a city, if we've responded and compromised where we could, if we've all sort of done our part to make this project go as smoothly as possible.
Well, I would say maybe the city attorney can jump in here, because when we're, when staff is evaluating these projects for comprehensive plan amendments, subdivisions, rezonings, we have criteria that we have to look at. And we addressed all of that criteria at the planning commission. That's why we recommended approval to the planning commission. The planning commission recommended approval to you. So regarding the traffic concerns, I think we've addressed those. Our traffic engineer is not here tonight, but the city engineer is, and he could certainly speak to those. But you're, so procedurally, we need action tonight, whether you vote against it or not. You can ask the developer to extend the deadline. So you're essentially asking him for a second waiver of that requirement. That is an option.
And then, City Attorney Shockley, did you want to address the question posed by, or the statement by Ms. Houston?
Yeah, just to reiterate what the city planner had indicated, typically, for rezoning, you follow the comprehensive plan. The city staff evaluates the proposed rezoning towards the comprehensive plan and then recommends that to approval for the council. The next steps in the process, the plating approval, along with the developer agreements, oftentimes those are done in accordance with the city's current policy. And you really won't know, you know, until they put together a specific site plan, you're not going to know if it's going to have a, you know, what type of a business would locate on a particular lot, and whether it'll be a sixplex or a fourplex. What you're doing with the zoning is you're giving entitlement for that zoning. So, not sure if that helps to answer the question, but it really depends upon what the next request would be from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. And I see our city engineer is up at the podium, and perhaps you can address the traffic issue that has been brought up on 40th.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure about what specifically the concern is about traffic, but 40th Avenue South is a minor arterial roadway. When we built it in 2005, you know, it was the understanding that it would carry anywhere from 5,000 to 15,000 cars a day at ultimate development. And the area is about half-developed, and the traffic is probably less than half of what we had estimated. I think on the far east end, it's maybe only 1,000 cars a day, but closer to 8th Street, it's, might be up to 5,000 cars a day, something like that. You know, but it's planned to develop. That's what it is. And it has pretty good access control. There's limited, really, the driveways that are there are from existing properties that were there before we built the road. There is a limited number of intersections, and we have control as the area plats. We apply our access standards. And there's a good bike path on the road. And right now, I think, basically between 14th Street or 16th Street going east, I believe the speed limit is 40 right now. And as the area develops and traffic increases, it's possible that the speed limit should come down in its current condition without development on both sides, that speed limit is appropriate. But those are things that, as the area develops and as we have things to react to, we can make modifications. For example, you know, so there's a traffic signal at 8th Street, and there's an all-way stop over at 40th Street. The other streets in between stop for 40th Avenue South. You know, as those intersections get more traffic on them, there might be reasons to make changes to the traffic control at those intersections. Those are all things that we will deal with when the time is appropriate for that. And we expect changes to come as the area develops. We will need to make changes to some of those intersection traffic controls.
Thank you, Mr. Trowbridge. One other question I had, Robin, when you brought this, when this item was in front of Planning Commission, and then during the course of these last couple of weeks, have there been any Morehead residents that have submitted concerns, or have the concerns primarily come from individuals in the townships?
We have not received any comments from Morehead residents. We've received two comments from township residents during the public hearing process, and then at the last council meeting, and then the one this evening would be the third township resident.
Thank you. Councilmember Neesmire, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My follow-up question is actually for Mr. Trowbridge. You talked about as improvements are needed to 40th, that they would be handled, which I appreciate the infrastructure availability as well as the forward-thinking. There had been some questions about who pays to keep up 40th. And since we were talking earlier about special assessments, I'm curious if you know how 40th as a road is maintained, and if it's maintained through special assessments, and if that's the region. If you cannot answer, because I'm putting you on the spot, please say, I'm sorry, I can't help you.
I can answer. So when the project was initially constructed, it was a new improvement, because it had been a gravel road before that. We improved it to a paved road, curb and gutter, put in water main. At that time, the cost of the improvements was assessed 100% to, it was a fairly large area, because this would have been one of our first area-wide assessments, because we made that policy change in 2005. But pretty much every property between 35th Avenue South and 46th Avenue South would have gotten an assessment for that. And then properties that are outside city limits, that amount has been set aside. And at such time as those properties would be annexed, then we could have an assessment hearing for those. There were other properties like this one that we're talking about that I believe would not have had an assessment set yet. It would have had a deferred assessment because the parcel had been annexed but was not developed. So in accordance with the policy, the amount of that assessment would have been deferred. So that's the original construction. So there's quite a bit of money out there that the city is sitting on, waiting for the properties to develop. As far as maintenance goes, we have not... As far as maintenance goes, we have not had to do anything other than routine maintenance since that road was constructed. So city seal coating is just paid for through the property taxes. And we are currently planning to do a project in, I think, '26 or '27 that would do a mill and overlay, because the road will have been more than 20 years old, and that's a good time to do a mill and overlay. I believe we'll have federal funding to pay for part of that. But like all of our mill and overlay or rehab projects, the city policy would be that we would assess a portion of the cost and then the rest of it is the city share. And that federal funding we have will help offset the city share for that. But that's how maintenance, those types of maintenance will be handed. Routine is just paid for by the city, and then more significant maintenance is done as an assessed project.
Thank you, Mr. Trowbridge. I'm going to, City Manager Molly, you actually had your hand raised, so have you?
Sure, if you don't mind, I'd just like to comment on our staff that has been working on this. They are so good and smart, as you can see. I mean, this has gone on for a few years, working to get to this point where we're having the conversation. I'm not trying to influence your vote at all, but I want you to know that you're dealing with one of the most professional teams in this metro area, certainly, and there's no question about it. I also want to say that the developer, Justin Berg, there was a comment about absentee landowners and developers and things like that. The Berg family grew up a potato throw away from this land. Justin did himself and knows this area. I mean, would have played as a child in this neighborhood and the such. And I would just want to say that, you know, sometimes things slip away. This team has a reputation locally as being a very strong quality developer using sustainable building materials and thing, kind of like on a higher level than, I'm not going to go any further than that, but builds a quality product and is thoughtful. I also just want to speak to the conditions that get us here. There's a lot of, a lot of steps that are established by policy, by the city council that go into giving the community, developers in the community and staff and others certainty to have the trust necessary to have the conversations, to put the materials together for a planning commission, to a city council, and then ultimately to sitting down and putting together plans that are going to support growth. And that really is born in trust. And so that's necessary, that we maintain that. I just want to make sure everybody sees that, that we keep that, so that we can keep that going. Some communities have controlled growth boundaries. Our local plans and studies are not built that way. This area was built for growth and development. And I appreciate that we want to make sure it's the highest quality and that it serves the neighborhood, and we have a regional park, and that we want it to be diverse and affordable and attainable. But this, I just want to make sure that this is not, we're not, if we're moving towards some area where we really try to control what that future growth and development looks like, we're going to have to kind of go back to kind of that future growth planning. We have to take a look at our comprehensive plan. We're going to have to do some real work in our transportation plan and our capacities for water and sewer. And so just want to put a little light on that, that this area really is built for future growth and development. And it is to the south, it is to the east, and it is to the southeast. This is the growth area in our metro.
Thank you, Mr. Molly. And I know that we've had a discussion about this for over a half an hour now. And I know it was discussed at the last council meeting, and there was, would have been discussion at the planning committee as well. If there are not any additional questions that have already not been answered, I would give the council an opportunity to ask them now. Otherwise, I think we should probably move on for a vote. Councilmember White.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to Councilmember Selgevold's question, because I don't think we did answer this, is in terms of the properties, the two homeowners that will kind of be surrounded. And I agree with my fellow council member that this is detrimental for them. And so can you, can we talk, can we have a conversation about what are, because I've tell you, I've heard contradictory things about whether offers have been made or not made, what will happen to those properties? And also to the property that is in between those.
And I don't know, Mr. Berg, if you have, if you would be making that offer, if that is an offer that the city made.
I'd be happy to comment, at least, on our accommodations and our conversations. We did plat greenfield for the space between those two homes. There's actually a shared well for those properties on that land. That was done, as well as a larger lot to allow for appropriate buffering of the neighbor. I don't think their values are going to be affected or go down. There's a home with an acre lot next to a park that's on an arterial road that's accessed. So I'd be curious of where the proof is in that. I do think that if there were concerns about development happening, you know, this work was all laid out when? 15, 16 years ago? I mean, I was still learning how to open up a door on a house. And, you know, they should have known this was coming to an extent, right? It's in all of that future land use. They had an opportunity to join the city. They're a township. So it would be very hard as a developer to really put in effort in Morehead to develop if we're going back on all of these things that we base all of these efforts on with high-level professionals and years of time and surveying the neighborhood and visiting with Sue Kern a multiple times. The other neighbor never made contact back. I've talked with Sue a lot. We've stated that we're working on plans. We've kept her up to date. We've said that it's a possibility for us to buy her out. They don't have another home located to move to. It's not so simple as just here's your money and see you later. Yeah, very sensitive to these people's concerns and probably more time than any other developer in this town's going to take, having dialogue with them. I don't know if it made any progress or not, because here we are, still discussing it. But that's what I have to say about that. Words Forrest Gump.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. All right, with that.
Move to approve?
Second, Nelson.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Niesemeyer, a second by Councilmember Nelson. One last call, any further discussion? Councilmember Gilbertson.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. All I, I grew up south, I grew up on 3rd Street and 40th Avenue. Too bad you took out the jump on that railroad track before I got my driver's license. You go west to east, I go to Church of Good Shepherd. You got a school, you got apartments, you got soccer fields, you've got green space, you've got single-family homes. We're at five, you know, we're at 5,000 to 6,000 traffic. The soccer fields don't get used in the winter. The school has set hours, the church has set hours. You've all done your due diligence. I'm not a developer. We don't, I know what we don't want, a car wash in a bank, right? We need homes. We need residential units, and you guys are stepping up to do it. So I say we go for it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember White.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, I just want to say, in response to City Manager Molly's comment, again, I want to reiterate that, Mr. Berg, how much I value the work that you have done. And I certainly wouldn't want to do anything to discount that. And again, I've seen bad developers. I know what it looks like, and I know the damage it can cause. I'm really on the fence here with this, but I want to, you've done a lot of things to build good faith in our community. And I want to see this as a first step of, but, and I'm really torn with this of not having a little more of a guardrail. And I think if it was somebody who we didn't have a history with, I'd feel differently. But I will support it because I want, I have some faith that we are going to come together and have some more conversations about this. And I would really like to see us doing some things to maybe, again, compromise rather than, you know, say, okay, I think the traffic, we can manage the traffic volume, because clearly people are concerned about that. Or some other things where we can even just show people in more detail what it's going to look like. I think, you know, that would help alleviate that. So I wish we would have done a little more of that on the front end. I think that might have made it a little bit better. But I trust the work that you've done and want us to move forward.
Any other comments? Seen none, why don't we get a roll call vote on this, please?
Mayor.
Oh, I apologize. Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Madam Carlson. I'm glad this discussion came about here. It was a really good discussion. And, you know, it's a tough decision for me. I voted no, because I had some concerns last week. But, you know, things change. And thank you for coming today, tonight, and explaining. Still worried about the traffic. I hear about 40th, I hear about, you know, it's like a racetrack. You take that one-stop sign and you just, and people just fly. So that's still been my concern, so. But thanks for being here, and thanks, I'm going to thank the council for a great discussion. And it's a discussion we need to have, so thanks.
Right. Don't think there is anyone else who has their hand up, so could I get a roll call vote, please?
Selgevold?
Aye.
McDougal?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And that motion carries. So the rezoning has been authorized by the city council. Thank you. Okay, all right. We just have mayor and council reports. Okay, so moving on to mayor and council reports. Any council members have reports? Councilmember Niesemeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have had a busy bunch of weeks, and I just want to appreciate all of the Indigenous Peoples' Day activities and events. I had the opportunity to participate in just a couple, but there were so many throughout our region. It was, you saw people rushing back and forth between place to place, and I love to see that sort of support. And I appreciate how the city of Morehead chose to move. And we have moved for a couple of years, our city council meeting, so people can participate more fully in the holiday and the events. Second, some reports on some meetings. I serve as the liaison on the MCAM board. MCAM stands for Help Me Out, City Manager Molly.
Morehead Area Community Access Television.
Thank you. I'm great with acronyms, but not all of them. And so at the MCAM meeting two weeks ago, we were able to approve the proposed budget for the upcoming year. And because of a recent theft, we are looking to replace a number of the equipment pieces. MCAM is what allows us to watch Clay County meetings, city council meetings, as well as boards and commissions, and a variety of other programming throughout our community. And so I appreciate that group very much. Second, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee met at the end of September, and they chose to increase the tipping fee and parcel fee. And so as Clay County residents, those fee increases for Clay County and solid waste will trickle down, but we have a number of opportunities to pay for those. Also, for those of you who go to the Resource Recovery Center, they will be replacing the doors, which had lots of trouble with the wind. And out on 15th Avenue North, there's a lot of wind, because there's nothing but fields and corn to stop that. So look for the new doors and always remember that you can bring your recyclables, your batteries, and a variety of things to put to good waste and purpose there. My last update is on the Clay County Extension Committee. We met last week, and we had a wonderful presentation from Kamaluddin Mohammed, who's a SNAP Ed Health and Wellness Coordinator at the Regional Extension Office. And they were able to share information on a recent program, Let's Go Fitness, Food, Fun, and Friends. And so this summer, they were only able to offer that programming to young men, but they are looking to expand it to not only impact young men in our communities, but also their families got to participate as well. And next summer, they'll be expanding it to young men and women. So all children of all genders will be involved in that programming next year. The, last week, we had 4H Week, and so Clay County Extension had a whole bunch of posts on Facebook and a variety of other social medias, and they have a presentation to go along with that, Beyond Ready for 4H Students. And we can look forward to that 4H presentation at our next council meeting. I am really excited to invite those coordinators, as well as hopefully some 4H participants to join us for a council meeting. But not only that, they list the number of activities that we have. Most people think 4H is for rural folks, but a great portion of the programming for the Clay County Extension 4H folks are actually in Morehead. And so you can look for those on Morehead Community Ed, as well as the Clay County Extension social media services.
Thank you. Also, I did note that we missed 11B. So 11A, we did pass the ordinance to rezone 2107 40th Avenue South, but we did not address the resolution to prove the title and summary of the ordinance. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve 11B.
So move, Niesemeyer.
Second, Nelson.
So motion by Niesemeyer, second by Nelson. Any discussion on that item?
Do we have to bring the whole group back in?
You are all here, the people who are voting, so with that, any other comments or questions? Seen none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Sorry about that. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Niesemeyer. Councilmember White.
Mayor, I also just wanted to thank a few people for the work that they did on Indigenous Peoples' Day, including the Morehead Indian Education, Dolores Gabbert in particular, I know did a huge amount of work, and the Indigenous Association that partnered with the Human Rights Commission. On to mention, I attended the expungement clinic and resource fair today that was put on by the Minnesota Attorney General's Office. If you weren't able to attend and are interested in getting information about having a criminal record expunged, you can go online, but you can also, they are planning on coming back to Morehead. They're looking at coming back in the spring. It was a great event. There was also lots of other resources there from Northwest Legal Services, Legal Revolution, which helps people apply for a pardon, which one of the things I learned is that while there are certain things that could be expunged, but other things may require a pardon. And some of these things, of course, interfere with things like getting a job, housing, and so on. Minnesota, rural Minnesota SEP has career counseling, jobs, skills, training, and League of Women Voters that was there just to register people to vote. And so I'm glad to hear that they are coming back in the spring. But again, you can contact the Minnesota Attorney General's Office now to find out about expungement. And I, lastly, just wanted to mention that Councilmember Niesemeyer, Councilmember Karun and I will be on a panel at MSUM next week for an event hosted by the MSUM Women's and Gender Studies Program called Women in Local Government: Why Your Voice Matters and How to Get Involved. And so if any of you would like to come, it's Wednesday, October 23rd, 6:30, in the Center for Business, Room 109, if you want to come and hear us speak. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember McDougal.
A couple things real quick. Couple weeks ago, I did attend the Heritage of India Day. It was held here at the MCAM Center. It was a great event for the first time they had it. A lot of information, a lot of great food, and I think it was topped off by the fashion show at the end of the night. And then I too attended a bunch of Indigenous culture events yesterday, be it the luncheon here and the powwow last night at MHS. So it was a good time.
You. Other council members? Councilmember Gilbertson.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The MPS Water Electric Rates Meeting yesterday, we approved a 4% water rate and a 2% electric rate. That's kind of what it's been the last couple of years and looking at that for the next few years anyways. So it comes out to about $4 a month for the average ratepayer. And League of Women Voters, candidate forums for wards one and two is tomorrow night at the library from 6:00 to 7:00. Then...
1 and 2 is tomorrow night at the library from 6 to 7. Then, then somebody's at 7:15 to 8. I don't, I'm in Ward 1, so I don't know where the other ones are. So, but go to the library from 6 to 8 tomorrow.
Councilmember Neesemire.
Can I ask Councilmember Gilbertson a follow-up? Is it the percentage increase for MPS that you spoke of?
4% for water and 2% for electric.
It's going up 4%?
And 2% for electric.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that that wasn't the total percentage, but that it is going up those percentage points. Thank you. Sorry, Madam Mayor.
You, other council members? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Last week, we had the MAP Bus Coordinating Board meeting. That was the last one under the old structure. Councilmember White was also there. So going forward, they're transitioning into the new structure that we talked about here at council, probably a month, couple months ago now, probably by this point. So they give a nice history of the operations and how it came to be initially, and a lot of, a lot of great work there. So unfortunately, Lori Van Beek is still planning to retire later on this year. So that's kind of neat. Also attended the open house of the Moorhead Readiness Center, also the National Guard Armory Center. That was a great event. All done with their remodeling project up there. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other council members have reports? All right, seeing none. I had a number of events that I attended the last couple of weeks. The Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities had their Board of Directors meeting, discussed was upcoming legislature, the upcoming legislative session. In addition to the Fall Conference, which is coming up in November, so hopefully maybe many of the council members will be able to attend the Fall Conference in Alexandria. There were multiple meetings of the Flood Diversion Authority, the Finance Meeting, the Moorhead Clay County Joint Powers Association Planning Committee. There were initial interviews conducted for the Executive Director position, and three individuals were selected to do final interviews, which are scheduled for October 24th in the afternoon. I also wanted to extend gratitude and appreciation to the executive leadership team and City Manager Molly for hosting a council candidate forum for individuals who are seeking election for councilmember seats. And all of the directors throughout the city were able to provide information to the candidates about the phenomenal work that is being done by them and their staff in the city. So thank you for organizing that and making sure that the candidates had access to all of that information and to be able to have conversations with the executive leadership in Moorhead. There were two Oktoberfests that I attended. One was in Junkyard, or at Junkyard. One was at the First Presbyterian Church. And Girl Scout Troop 33022 asked me to come and speak. And it was interesting, because it was right the same day as a candidate forum, and they had their Girl Scout Troop do a mini-voting exercise where they got to vote on what the theme was gonna be for their Christmas party. So they got to participate in an actual vote. Was also very honored to be asked by West Central Initiative to be on a panel presentation with Marlene Johnson, who was the first lieutenant governor, female lieutenant governor in the state of Minnesota. Just an incredible woman who really made a lot of great changes while she was a lieutenant governor, and also broke that ceiling as a first female in that position. There was a voters' training workshop that I was asked to participate in, along with Councilmember Neesemire. So that was a great event, where we got to share information with individuals. And also participated in a presentation regarding the veterans' cemeteries. So there was, the Honor Guard of North Dakota and Minnesota was selected as the entity that will be able to move forward with helping to develop the veterans' cemetery on the North Dakota side. But that North Dakota cemetery serves individuals in North Dakota, Western Minnesota, and also South Dakota. And Senator Hoven was here, and there was a press conference in regards to that cemetery. City Manager Molly and I spoke to the Retired Teachers Association about all of the things that are happening in the city of Moorhead. We ran out of time, because there are so many things happening. And then, last but not least, there was a Red River Dispatch meeting that was held, and the construction of the Red River Dispatch Center is, they've already started to scrape the site, and hopefully that will proceed without any hiccups. And there will be a new dispatch center that will be built. It's on the northern, or the North Dakota side, but serves all of the city of Moorhead. With that, I don't have anything else. But also, thank you for the Indigenous Peoples' Association. I was able to attend the noon luncheon, which was extremely informative, and the presenter was absolutely excellent. All right, City Manager Molly.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say, if you ever want to have a great day presenting to a bunch of retired teachers, is one way to find out, kind of like, to learn kind of where we came from at these levels. I'll just say, it's interesting how people in teaching professions work. They'll leave you sometimes, and you don't, you don't understand what they were teaching you until like, when they're really good. It's like 15, 20 minutes later, you go, I got it. I get what they were trying to do. So when you said that we presented to the teachers, I think it may have been the other way around, Mayor. But it was a really great visit, and I'd look forward to doing it again. And it actually is one of the, one of the sweetest spots in Moorhead. And they meet more monthly at the Marriott, and it's just an incredible group. I'm so grateful for that. And the other thing I just want to say is that tonight, under the consent agenda, sometimes these things go by. But one of the items is the appointment of election judges for the November 5th election. And we're looking at three triple-column spreadsheets of these incredible people that go out and work that day of that election in such a way to make sure that it's fair, accessible, and done with the highest level of quality. And we have, we had any number of trainings. We have the medical facility voting that's already occurred. And so there's a lot of great work and a lot of great intention that is going into it. And I just want to recognize our city clerk, Christina Rust, who's sitting right next to me, who's been doing so great, working with people. And when you stop in these places, and when folks are stopping by to pick things up, and as we prepared, I just want to give everybody every assurance that it's gonna be done with the highest level of professionalism and care to make sure that this election in Moorhead is great.
Thank you. And we do not have an executive session tonight, and we don't have any new business. So with that, it is 7:16. We are adjourned. Good night, Moorhead.